Good evening. This seventeenth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Tonight's invocation will be provided by the Reverend Sherrell Savage. Reverend Savage, it's good to have you in this role. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Eternal and loving God, we pause in this sacred moment of gathering to acknowledge your presence among us. You are known by many names, oh God, yet you are the same source of wisdom, justice, and peace. We thank you for the gift of community, for the beauty and diversity of our city, for the citizens who call it home, and for these leaders who have answered the call to serve. Grant this council clarity of mind, compassion of heart, fairness, every choice rooted in integrity, and every action reflect a genuine desire for the common good. Bless those who labor quietly behind the scenes, those who listen, those who speak, and those who trust in the process of democracy. Remind us all that leadership is service, and service is love and action. May peace dwell in our city, may hope rise in our neighborhoods, and may unity prevail over division. May the work we do be guided by love that transcends boundaries, and may our shared purpose remind us that we are one human family, woven together in divine light. Let us now go forth in faith, hope, and humility, trusting that the source of all creation walks with each of us now and always. In the name of the God of all who provides us many paths, let us all say amen.
Thank you, Reverend Savage, and thank you for your good service to the people of the Fifth District. Councilmember Blanchard will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Marine. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen. Mr. President, we have a quorum. Please note Vice President Middleton and Councilmember McCray has excused absences, and Councilmember Torrance is absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journals for the October twentieth meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes in the desk documents folder.
Without objection, the journals will be adopted. Hearing none, the journals are adopted. Bills signed by the mayor can be found on the meeting agenda. We now move on to executive nominations. Madam Clerk.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-three Catalina Bird, member, Board of Ethics.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-four Stacy Griffin, member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-five Matthew Hill, member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-six Khalil Uqda, member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-seven Dr. Kevin Daniels, member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-eight Bree Jones, member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-eight-nine Amy McLean, member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-nine-zero Adrian Brown, member, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-nine-one Dr. Nadine Finnegan Carr, member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-nine-two Dr. Reynaldo Evangelista, member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-nine-three Dr. Amal Foster, member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-nine-four Stephen Ruckman, member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-nine-five Yvette Ilitchi, member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-nine-six Matthew Mentor, member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-nine-seven Gloria Andella, member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations.
EA two-five dash zero-zero-nine-eight Chanel Green, member, Community Relations Commission.
This nomination has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. We now move on to bills being introduced. Tonight, we will hear a package of bills from councilmembers Glover, Blanchard, and Jones related to the proliferation of smoke shops in our city. We know that we are seeing an increasing number of illegal smoke shops popping up all over East and West Baltimore. We know that too often, the products are being marketed to our children, that they, in some cases, contain extremely harmful materials that without proper regulations in place, they can be incredibly poisonous, particularly to young children whose brains are still developing. We know that some of these smoke shops are popping up near schools. We are a city of entrepreneurs, small businesses put the charm in charm city, but this council wants to be crystal clear. If you are going to open up a business in Baltimore, do it the right way. Do not prey on the vulnerability of our kids and our communities. That is why I'm so glad that these councilmembers have come together this evening to introduce these bills. It is a sign of both the council engaging and listening to constituents on a real quality-of-life issue and also collaborating and working together across districts. So I'm grateful for their participation. Also, thank you to Councilmember Ramos and Parker, who were there today at our press conference announcing these bills. With that, Madam Clerk, please read the first bill.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-one-one-four Zoning Uses Smoke Shop. For the purpose of making smoke shops a conditional use by approval of the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals in all commercial zoning and mixed-use districts, setting use standards for smoke shops, making conforming changes, and defining certain terms. Lead sponsor Blanchard, co-sponsors Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Gray, Bullock, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
Councilmember Blanchard, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very well said as to the motivations behind it. And I appreciate both of my colleagues who I'm co-sponsoring this package of bills with. I know we've put in a lot of work over the last couple of months to figure out how to get this set up the right way. Very excited about the introduction of these bills for all the reasons that have been mentioned today. My bill specifically does something that's very similar to what the Council VP and Councilwoman Ramos's bill for small-box establishments did. So it creates a specific land use in the zoning code specifically for smoke and vape shops, and then sets a what actually constitutes that, and then sets some minimum distance requirements from smoke shops with each other, as well as from smoke shops to places that our children are most likely to be, schools, rec centers, et cetera. I'm really excited about this package of bills. I'm excited to finally get this kicked off and going. And lastly, I'll just say that we modeled this both on the dollar stores bill, as well as some legislation from PG County that accomplishes a similar goal. And so the details, the percentages, and the minimum distances and whatnot, we're certainly very interested, at least with my bill, in getting both community input, as well as business input, as the right way to do this, and looking forward to having a robust discussion there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-one-one-five Window Display Luminance. For the purpose of creating limits on the luminance of a window display and defining certain terms. Lead sponsor Jones, co-sponsors Parker, Dorsey, Conway, Gray, Bullock, Blanchard, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. District twelve, as well as communities, neighborhoods throughout Baltimore City, has been seeing a proliferation of smoke shops, epidemic of smoke shops popping up. Unfortunately, it's often been, you know, those same corner stores, bodegas, we've often patroned as children to get out candy, but now they're turning into smoke shops. One of the issues that I often hear about and see within District twelve is the issue of the lighting. One thing they often have in common is really aggressive bright lights that are often left on when in residential neighborhoods, even after they close, often making it hard for residents to sleep at night, you know, through the light coming through their window. With new industry, often we have to introduce new regulation, regulation to encourage people to become good neighbors, to let people know how they should operate within the neighborhoods we represent, and that's what my bill looks to do. It looks to set regulation on the brightness of these lights, the big large LED lights that are in the window. Often, we see them only in smoke shops, and this is something we see specifically when it comes to these smoke shops. I guess often, a lot of them may think the brighter, the more it attracts business, but that also creates an hindrance to our neighborhoods and our community, and as a council, it's our duty to protect our neighborhoods as well. So I'm happy to introduce this legislation and have a robust conversation around, you know, what that brightness looks like, what that regulation looks like, so our residents can have the peace and the calm that they deserve in the places that they live. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We will now move on to resolutions of the City Council being introduced. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-three-seven-R Informational Hearing Tobacco Retailers. For the purpose of requiring representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, Police Department, Sheriff's Office, Department of Planning and Baltimore City Information and Technology, and inviting representatives from the Maryland Alcohol, Tobacco, and Cannabis Commission, ATCC, and the Maryland Department of Health Center for Tobacco Prevention and Control to appear before the City Council to discuss the proliferation of tobacco retailers in Baltimore City, existing law regulating these retailers, and how these laws are enforced, and how the city can better regulate tobacco retailers and protect communities from the harmful impacts of tobacco use. Lead sponsor Glover, co-sponsors Parker, Conway, Gray, Bullock, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilman Glover.
After that, this informational hearing is to also educate, not just us on the City Council, but also the public. As I mentioned early on, in my district, within a three-block radius of Mineman Street, we have a total of thirteen smoke shops. We're seeing kids, you know, view and also enter into many of those smoke shops. I'm getting personal calls and inboxes from social media in reference to their kid being hospitalized by a substance from one of those smoke shops on Mineman Street. Again, it's an informational hearing for our colleagues and us to also educate ourselves and our community, but for us to put a stop to the illegal activities that are going on within many of our communities across Baltimore City. And I just think this is the perfect opportunity to slow this cancer now before it gets worse, because all we're doing is creating a next generation of addicts in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. This resolution has been assigned to the Committee on Legislative Investigations. Again, appreciate these councilmembers working together to address this significant quality-of-life issue in our city. And again, our message is this is not anti-business legislation, but to the bad actors who would seek to prey on vulnerable kids and our communities, you are not wanted in the city of Baltimore. Take it someplace else. We do not want to become one of these other cities that is just littered with smoke shops all over the place. That is not to disrespect anyone who's been in this industry, but it is to say we are seeing a deeply troubling pattern in our city, and we are seeking to stop it before it gets completely out of control. Again, thank you to colleagues for your collaboration. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the desk documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We now move to our only bill on second reader. The chair recognizes Councilmember Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Without objection, we will proceed with reading short titles. We will proceed with reading short titles. We now move to the bill from the Labor and Workforce Committee. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-five-one Labor and Employment Pregnancy Accommodations.
Chair recognizes Chair Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five. It was recommended as favorable with amendments. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk. These amendments include, one, changes the time that an employer has to respond to a request for accommodations to ten days from five. Amendment two, it allows for the employer to send an electronic copy of the accommodation policy under certain conditions. Condition A, if they will issue a paper copy on request, and B, if the employee can confirm receipt of the policy. Amendment three, it strikes the criminal penalty established, and notes a change in the numbering of the legislation added to the bill. And four, clarifying the authorizing legislation and creates this as a civil matter, allowing for citations and a thousand-dollar fine. And the last amendment, it removes criminal penalties and makes the bill enforceable by civil citation. Mr. President, I've moved the amendments favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. I apologize. Any debate or discussion on the amendments as presented? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of approving the amendments, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The amendments are passed.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill as amended? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. Before we move to bills on third reading, the chair recognizes Councilmember Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the motion to return. Mr. President, there was an error in the drafting of the third reader copy that was before members at the last council meeting on bill number twenty-five zero-zero-six-two, which was passed, I believe unanimously by the council onto the mayor's desk. In order to be able to correct that, I now make a motion that we recall the bill from the mayor's desk.
Is there any debate or discussion on this motion? All those in favor of requesting return of the bill from the mayor's desk, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes, and I will submit a request to the mayor on behalf of the council that he return bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-six-two for further consideration. Thank you. We now move to the bills on third reader. Madam Clerk, please read the bill and call the roll.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-four-zero Zoning Uses Retail Small-Box Establishment. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-six-three Zoning Administrator Transfer to Department of Planning. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-six-four Zoning Bulk and Yard Requirements Amendments. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance. I'll restart. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen. Notes from Conway, Schleifer, and Torrance.
Noted. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero-zero-six-five Zoning Eliminating Off-Street Parking Requirements. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos. Jones, Glover. Ramos, Cohen. Notes from Conway, Schleifer, Torrance, Porter, and Glover.
This bill is approved. Explain your vote. Councilmember Torrance, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I rise to just reiterate what the communities in the middle black neighborhoods have expressed. Last session, I provided an amendment that would have been a compromise to this bill. I want to reiterate that this council has now ignored the rights of black citizens in West Baltimore, but also citizens who have actually acted that we move slower. Tonight, Mr. President, we will move another bill that was also opposed by residents that I voted for. However, I just want to make sure that this council has not listened to my residents. I want to be explicit to the thousands of dollars that we spent in master plans in West Baltimore that indicated what they wanted. Residents didn't say they wanted this. I also want to indicate that our middle neighborhoods where we invested time, energy, and treasure in looking at market analysis does not support this as well. This is very clear, and I reiterate, when brought to this actual topics, the first question I got from staff was that this is for those who are interested in coming to Baltimore. That told me that, in hindsight, if you read The Color of Law, that we have not centered black and brown persons' actual lives in the detrimental history of this actual chamber before them. I say that because when someone says that this is for those to come, that tells me that we're ignoring those who are here. I agree with the preface of all the bills, that we can do this together, but I think that we can do this in a way that is meaningful, that is listening to our residents. And I marked the passing of the transfer from Baltimore. It took years to get there. This took four months. I'm gonna say that again. Transfer from Baltimore took four years. This took four months. I don't take this position lightly, because when I took my oath in December of twenty-twenty, I may not agree with everything my residents said. I may not agree with everything this council has said. But I do believe in one thing. I am a son of Baltimore who believes that this was the first free black city. And we have learned, and I say this wholeheartedly, that not everything fits Baltimore. It is the charm in every portion of this city. And it's the one beautiful thing about Baltimore is when you ask someone what school they went to, they mean high school. That is a history that I want to preserve, but I also want to respect that we can do both. We can grow our city, we can grow our tax base, but I have to remember that there are black women who lived in West Baltimore who upheld this tax base when white flight happened, when we had predatory mortgages that didn't allow people to cross Fulton Avenue, which I represent. That I now live in a neighborhood called Ashburton, that in nineteen-seventy-two, the Baltimore sun wrote, "Ashburton: From Jews to Gentiles to Blacks." I also am the grandson of a woman who blockbusted to live at thirty-four fourteen Winch Falls Parkway. I recognize that history, but I also recognize that we can do it. Parking is just one thing. I want to remind this councilman, Beth Stye, parking in twenty-two thousand and three, it went from eighty percent of the units to seventy percent, to sixty, to fifty, to twenty percent of the units. And then in that time, that neighborhood, which was historically black and had large vacancies such as West Baltimore, went from being seventy-one percent black to forty-one percent black, when the majority of the homes sold to nonmultiregional dwellings. In the District of Columbia, we've seen the same thing. People have escaped to Calvert County, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, just to afford a living, but no longer. I have a family member who lives in Washington, D.C., which used to be Anacostia and not too far from the stadium. It is now called Capitolville. She made an eighty thousand dollar investment in nineteen-eighties, which is now worth three point four million dollars. She's the only black person left on that block. I want to make sure this council understands, we can do better, we can upzone, but we can do it in a way that respects character, that respects the history of our neighborhoods, but recognizes that the people who are most harmed and marginalized will not be there. This package does not come with financial assistance for those who will have access to actually build these products. Our market is clear. Live Baltimore is not most of the cities that we paid for. It says the people who live here actually want a single-family home. We actually have a strategy that is connected to our TIF, to build that affordable housing and allow people to live in their homes. We just announced today an application for people who are renters in Baltimore City to actually own a home in West Baltimore that a number of people have taken advantage of. We still have not received a comprehensive housing loan. And we're making these decisions. I want my council to say this one thing. I get you guys want to hear the best thing that Ezra Crane done wrote. But I'm telling you, I am a steward of history, and history has told me that progressivism does not always bring you along with them. So I want this council to rethink this. Tonight, I just want to make sure that I had my final statement I told you so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill twenty-five dash...
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Jones, explain your vote.
Yeah, I'd like to explain my vote, share the passion my colleague has in protecting our neighborhoods and protecting our communities. Just want to explain my vote, that my vote is not in support of gentrification, not in support of moving people out, but in support of lowering housing prices and creating more housing to help those who are experiencing a housing crisis, those who can't find a home, and those who happen to be dealing with homelessness. This is the struggle that exists in the city, that exists in the city, and this is a strategy we're hoping to help address that issue. What I will say is when it comes to protecting our neighborhoods against gentrification and against moving those legacy homeowners out, they deserve more than just parking requirements to protect them. And if that's the only thing that we have in order to protect those residents, then shame on us. And I will be interested, and I will be all ears for a conversation that will bring out legislation to protect those in those neighborhoods, to make sure gentrification doesn't happen. Because parking requirements and things such as that should not be the only thing protecting them, ensuring that they're able to live in their neighborhoods. So I look forward to a robust discussion on how we can put forth intentional mechanisms to make sure these neighborhoods that exist stay the way that they are. Because a lot of the redlining that happened in Baltimore City was intentional, and we need to be just as intentional to ensure that we protect the residents that are there. Just want to explain my vote, and I look forward to legislation and conversation to ensure that happens. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Porter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to follow up on what my colleagues were saying. Parking requirements, as we've seen, the oversaturation of substance abuse and mental health clinics in Baltimore have been the only lever for communities to say yes or no they want particular health clinics within their neighborhoods. And so, as Councilman Torrance mentioned, when we're talking about eliminating these parking requirements and also just really taking into the character of community, we have to take into account what is already there now. Most of our black and brown communities are seeing that oversaturation. They are seeing their communities in decline, and this is going in the wrong direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter. Anyone else before I come back to Councilman Torrance? Anyone else want to get a vote explained? Councilmember Torrance, I'm gonna ask you to keep it quick.
And I struggle with this, because my law...
And I struggle with this because my law degree always tells me that like, when people make an argument, you should tell them why their argument is wrong. Everyone, every study that has been cited for affordability has been raised, has been off, based off the Sun Belt. And Baltimore City is not the Sun Belt. We're in the Mid-Atlantic in the Northeast. The, the communities that we're citing don't have vacancy issues. And I think that the problem is, is that I just want to make sure that when we talk about the record, the record is based off of history, not the history of cities that are now bustling at the seams and need affordable housing. I'm talking about a city that has vacancy, that has opportunity to do it right, who's taking a bold strategy, but we have no data to support it in terms of affordability in the city. And I just want to make sure that because at the end of the day, the only person that parking works for is the bottom line is a developer, not for the person who lives at that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, hearing no other explanations of votes, this bill is approved. Colleagues, I will ask that you please hold committee announcements and regular announcements until, oh.
City Council Bill two five dash zero zero eight two planned unit development amendment Under Armour headquarters. Parker McCray, Dorsey Conway, Schleifer Middleton, Torrance Gray, Bullock Porter Blanchard Jones Glover Ramos Cohen.
This bill is approved. Sorry for getting ahead of myself. Colleagues, I will ask that you please hold committee announcements and regular announcements until we reconvene at five thirty, it is now five thirty-one. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held Monday, November tenth at five PM. There being no further business, this concludes the seventeenth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council. Uh, I'm gonna gavel us out and then I'm gonna gavel us back in. We will reconvene shortly for a special meeting. This meeting is now adjourned.
The meeting is about to begin. As a reminder, for all attendees, please take this opportunity to silence any electronic devices you may have, including cell phones.
Good evening. Good evening. This special meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Uh, the clerk will now call the roll of the members. I will note, a certain council member told me I wasn't hitting the gavel hard enough and so I felt the need to perhaps over-index or over-correct. Um, so apologies for the loud noise.
Parker. McCray, Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton, Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen. Mr. President, we have a quorum with Vice President Middleton and Councilmember McCray as excused absences.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, we are here to consider City Council Bill twenty-five dash zero zero six two, which was returned from the mayor's desk for further consideration. As per Rule thirteen dash three B, the bill is on third reader now that it's been returned to the mayor's desk. The chair recognizes the bill's sponsor, Councilmember Dorsey.
The bill's been returned to us from the mayor's desk. I make a motion that we voted again on third reader.
All those in. Councilman Dorsey, could you make a motion to substitute the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I make a motion that, uh, now we, now that we have before us the erroneous old copy of the bill that we put in its place on our desks, the new corrected copy that properly incorporates all of the second reader amendments.
Thank you, sir. Uh, there is a motion on the floor. All those in favor of substituting the correct version of the bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The correctly amended text of the bill has been substituted. Madam Clerk, please read the bill and call the roll.
City Council Bill two five dash zero zero six two, building code, single exit from residential occupancy. For the purpose of permitting certain residential buildings to have a single exit or access to a single exit, so long as certain conditions are met regarding the construction of the exit. Parker McCray Dorsey Conway Schleifer. Conway Schleifer Middleton Torrance Gray Bullock Porter Blanchard Jones Glover Ramos Cohen.
This bill is approved. And now committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Education, youth, and older adults, Chair Bullock.
Mr. President, um, the Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee will be having a hearing for LO two five zero zero three nine, which is, uh, the bill for First Step Strong Start Childcare in Baltimore City. And that will be at twelve thirty PM on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six. And then we also have LO two five two zero four zero. And that will also be follow-up to that hearing and that will be on, um, Fe- February twenty-six, twenty twenty-six at twelve thirty here in council chambers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Bullock, Housing and Economic Development, Chairman Torrance. No announcements. Labor and Workforce, Chair Jones. Uh, Land Use and Transportation, Chair Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two announcements.
Uh, Councilman Bullock, you can just turn your mic off.
Mr. President, I have two announcements. Uh, one for twenty-five zero zero nine five commercial motor vehicle repair on city streets prohibition. The committee will hear this on November sixth at ten AM, right here in the Duvern City Council Chamber. Second, uh, Council Bill twenty-five zero zero seven three zoning conditional use conversion to a banquet hall in the IMU one zoning district variances eleven hundred Wycomico Street. This will be added to the agenda that we already have for several other bills on November twentieth at nine AM here in the Duvern, Duvern City Council Chamber. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Uh, Legislative Investigations, Chair Schleifer. Public Health and the Environment, Chair Porter. Public Safety, Councilmember Conway. We now move to regular announcements. I would like to begin by recognizing the service of Mr. Chris Ryer, who recently retired after six years as Planning Director from the city of Baltimore. First off, give Chris a huge round of applause. Before that, he served as Director of the Southeast CDC and in many other roles. He began his career as a neighborhood planner in the department that he came to lead. Chris has been a consummate mensch throughout his time in city government. He bears a uncanny resemblance to the dude from Big Lebowski. He has been someone who is a true public servant, who loves the city of Baltimore, who gives of himself, who cares deeply about community, about planning, about what buildings should look like, what they shouldn't look like. Just someone who has really shown up in a huge way. And so, Chris, we are extremely indebted for your many years of services, of service to our city. Without objection, um, I would like to extend floor privileges and present you with this ceremonial resolution. Without objection, floor privileges will be extended. Floor privileges are extended and, come here, Chris. Okay, um, other announcements. Councilman Ramos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanted to, um, let everybody know uh, that the Assistant Street drop-off center, and it's a drop-off center, they've been told that it's a drop-off center, that's what we have to call it. Um, is, uh, we have a task force that the mayor, uh, has convened. There's three of us on the task force. Um, myself, uh, Councilman Torrance, and also Councilman Jones. Um, and I have been elected chair, so I just wanted to officially just announce the dates for the next few meetings. Uh, and the first one is to, the, the second meeting, uh, is tonight, uh, here at City Council Chambers at six thirty, uh, where we are taking public testimony, both, uh, in person and virtual. We will have another meeting, uh, November tenth, uh, after the council meeting, November twenty-fourth, after the council meeting, December eighth and December twenty-second. Uh, the mayor had charged us with providing a recommendation, uh, around the Assistant Street, whether to move it and where, or to, uh, keep it where it is, or to close altogether. Um, those are the dates we're working on now. If we, but we do want to have a deliberative process, so if we take longer, we're gonna, I'll announce, uh, more dates after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Appreciate your leadership on that issue. Anyone else? Regular announcements? All right. Two nights district spotlight comes from Councilmember Bullock of the Ninth District, Councilmember Park Dos. The floor is yours.
All right, so good af- good evening, uh, colleagues, uh, president, uh, members of the public. Appreciate the opportunity. As you know, last week, we had the part one of our, uh, presentation, which is really the end of the presentation. You got to see, um, the fantastic Romilius Abanova, who was performing, Rach Manonoff. I'll make sure you get.
Thank you.
Video of that. So without further ado, we will go ahead and get started. All right, so one of the great things about, uh, the Ninth District is there's been a number of investments uh, in our assets that are very strong, so please proceed. We'll hit this really quick.
It's the power of partnership. It is all for the benefit of young people.
Every day, three hundred kids are gonna walk in that door. They're gonna know that they're loved from day one and they're gonna have the opportunity to dream as big as they can.
Today's an exciting day for West Baltimore, for Boys and Girls Club, for Metropolitan Baltimore.
It's overwhelming to honestly think about the impact that we know is gonna come at this space.
It's really just the start now, uh, and not the end of a, a really exciting new chapter for the young people of Baltimore.
Young people are getting what they deserve.
Seeing the kids walk in the first time is what this is all about.
At first, they're walking through the hall and then the pace gets faster because they need to see it faster.
I bet they can't wait to use these spaces, which is gonna be the most important thing.
Being from Baltimore, I saw myself in them.
It's one thing to build a building, but to have partners at your back that not only support you, believe in you, ultimately, it's the kids who benefit.
Partners mean everything because the Boys and Girls Club cannot do this alone. And we are so grateful that we've been able to be a part of some strong partners, starting with the Ravens and the Machado Family Foundation and some of the more people.
Young people are going to thrive and this place is going to produce the leaders of tomorrow for the great city of Baltimore.
Now, I believe we could all agree that investing our young people, that's the greatest asset that we have in our, our city. I will also note, it's an auspicious day to be doing this. Fortunately, our Ravens got a second win today, so hence the purple that some of us are wearing. But if you can imagine that the Ravens, uh, and the Boys and Girls Club together put in millions of dollars to have a state-of-the-art recreation center for our young people. We're talking about a football field that Green Street Academy can use. They can have home games now. Opportunities for, um, seniors and other people in the community to access that space. That was a former vacant recreation center and so, uh, shout out to the Ravens, particularly Tori Smith, who was taking a tour of the neighborhood and wanted to make sure there was a level of investment. Let's go to the next, uh, issue. All right, this one we're super proud of. In, in, in West Baltimore and Baltimore as a whole, sometimes we see the challenge of vacant properties. Vacant school buildings, vacant residential properties, vacant commercial properties, but there's an opportunity for reinvestment here. So what you're looking at is the former Alexander Hamilton Elementary School that had been vacant. It's gone through the process between General Services and Department of Housing Community Development and Catholic Charities, uh, proposed, um, an intergenerational center here in West Baltimore. And fortunately, that transition has happened and that will be opening this spring. But what I will also say and take a great privilege of to, uh, to lift up, uh, Carolyn Fugit, who was a fellow church member of mine at Saint Edward, uh, Roman Catholic Church. Uh, she also is an icon in our city, not only in terms of her commitment to the faith community, hence it being named after her. But some of you may be familiar with the Reginald F. Lewis Museum. That is his mother. So again, there are a lot of connections. People say small Timor, small Timor is really small Timor. So again, um, this is gonna be a great investment for our young people, reactivating a formerly vacant space. Please proceed. Another one that's fantastic. Hit that, hit that button and we'll talk.
Welcome to the factory. This thirty-three thousand square foot building was once a gelato factory. After an extensive renovation, it's been transformed into a vibrant hub for nonprofit organizations and community events. The factory is located in the Franklin Square neighborhood of West Baltimore, at the corner of West Baltimore Street and Calveron Street. It's operated by the West Baltimore Renaissance Foundation in partnership with Life Bridge Health. Together, we manage resources and grant funds that support workforce development, youth mentoring, food access, and population health strategies throughout West Baltimore. Factory is home to several community-facing Life Bridge Health programs focused on workforce development, trauma response, and violence intervention. It also houses a variety of nonprofit organizations, offering services in mental health, social enterprise, youth development, and violence interruption. On the first floor, you'll find a twelve-person conference room and a large event space that can seat up to a hundred fifty people. We've already hosted several successful events in the space and many more are in the works. There are also open areas throughout the building designed for flexible use, whether you need a place to meet, collaborate, or work independently. Retractable garage doors and skylights fill the building with natural light, creating a welcoming and energetic atmosphere. One highlight of the space is a community art piece on the back wall created in partnership with Art With A Heart. Reflects both the building's history as a gelato factory and its new role as a center for opportunity and connection. Baltimore's Promise occupies a suite on the first floor and we plan to launch a construction pre-apprenticeship program in the second suite within the next year. Upstairs, construction's underway to build out the new home for the Franklin Square Safe Streets Program, which is expected to open this fall. Innovation Works also has a suite upstairs and is delivering entrepreneurship training to support social enterprise growth in West Baltimore. There's a classroom that seats twenty-five, which is used for workshops and training programs, and a computer lab with fourteen workstations. Plan to offer digital literacy training in the near future to help bridge the digital divide. The Life Bridge Health Suite is shared upstairs by the Violence Stabilization Program, Safe Streets, the Grace Medical Center Response Team, WBRF, and NAMI Baltimore. A major asset to our building is our commercial and production kitchen. WBRF is currently fundraising to fully renovate the space. Once complete, nonprofit partners will use it for food rescue and meal preparation, as well as programs focused on nutrition and healthy cooking. Community spaces at the factory available for rent and for nonprofit-led, mission-aligned events and programming. While there's a small fee, we strive to keep costs low to ensure the nonprofits can access the space affordably. We're proud of what we're building here at the factory and excited for what's ahead. Thanks for visiting and being a part of our growing community in West Baltimore.
So again, you see a, you see a consistent theme in terms of formerly vacant buildings, former industrial buildings, being retrofitted and having a great community to purpose with partnerships, with the resources that are gonna be so impactful for our community. Next slide, please. All right, this is another one that we're pretty excited about, for Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. Um, one of the things that we have recognized historically, there have been quite a few, uh, economic, racial, uh, geographic divisions in our city. And one of the things that we recognize with, for instance, the University of Maryland Baltimore, for so many years, had never actually crossed over Baltimore Street and done development over MLK. And so now you look at crossing Martin Luther King Boulevard, which has been a divide in many parts of the country, and this, uh, gleaming edifice, which is now going up and has, um, multiple, um, uh, opportunities for office space. Um, we actually had, uh, the Live Baltimore Birthday Bash there, um, this year. Um, it's been a great, we had an A-Rabbers event there. It's just a great, uh, testament to the development that's happening, um, in the midst of our community and then providing, um, that space for communities to operate within that space. Uh, please proceed. And again, you can see two hundred fifty thousand square feet lab space. Again, it's very flexible, um, in. And again, you can see 250,000 square feet, lab space. Again, it's very flexible, um, in terms of the innovation for the life sciences. Again, that's part of the growth strategy of, of our city in terms of not only education and medicine, but also innovation, particularly with, of the, in proximity to the University of Maryland Bio Park. Please proceed. All right, one of the things we're also very excited about is the BNO Railroad Museum. Uh, most of you may know that, um, Baltimore is, has been the birthplace of railroading and celebrating the 200th anniversary, um, of, of the beginning of the BNO Railroad. It's a very fantastic, uh, um, museum. But also, one of the things I would like to highlight as well, we are familiar with, um, the struggles in this, uh, in this country. Um, there've been some great exhibits, um, in the BNO. One of the things more recently I can talk about, um, has been actually the, the, um, the Underground Railroad. Many, many people not, may not realize that there have been freedom seekers who came through that, that station, um, literally on their way to the north for freedom. So again, not only is it a, a big part of the development of the city and of this country, but also the history as it relates to, uh, uh, to freedom seekers, and also thinking about the, uh, the, the, uh, exhibit for the Pullman Porter. So there's a lot. The BNO Railroad, if you have not gone, it's a very family-friendly, uh, place. So again, uh, take advantage of it. Please come and join us. Please proceed. All right, food and art. We know we're a town that loves food, and we love art. Let's go. Hollins Market, uh, again, open 7, 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. daily, one of the oldest public markets in our city. Um, it's actually gone through a recent, uh, renovation. That is the shed that has been renovated. The headhouse, um, still needs renovation, but again, this is, um, an important, uh, part of our city, not only in terms of added access to, to fruits and vegetables and, and, and fresh, uh, food as well, but also as a gathering space, um, within our community. And so there's a neighborhood that also, uh, uh, has borne the name Hollins Market. I'll take one quick pause here because I had made an, uh, committee, uh, community announcement a couple weeks ago about the Suebo 5K, Southwest Baltimore. Well, that, um, race was initially scheduled for, um, for October 5th. It has now been rescheduled for, guess what? Sunday, November 2nd. So the runners on the council, you want to come out and join us? You can come out on November 2nd. We'll, we'll be running past the BNO Railroad Museum, Hollins Market, but we'll be starting at Union Square Park. So please come out and join us. You might get some food afterward. Please, next slide. And again, you did see, um, uh, Ramilio Salmanova, who performs at our Union Square Soraya. I just mentioned, we'll be coming through the Union Square neighborhood. You'll be seeing some members if you come on Sunday. But again, there's been a lot, uh, a lot of good, uh, press and a lot of good attention. You could see what this looks like inside of these big, beautiful homes, uh, that are dating back to the 1860s and 1870s, that are packed with neighbors and folks who come to visit to hear, uh, uh, great music within, uh, the confines of a home here in West Baltimore. And obviously, there are some upcoming, um, concerts as well. Um, so again, you know, if you're willing to come through, make sure you do that, and also just the Union Square Cookies War coming up. And keep going. Anymore? And I think that's it. So again, I appreciate your indulgence for this second round. Uh, but again, you got to see the end and now you get to see the beginning. Uh, but again, what, what it, what it speaks to is there's a lot of beauty, there's a lot of investment in our city. Where, where there are challenges, there are also opportunities. So again, appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock, for pouring into and loving on Southwest Baltimore. Appreciate the presentation. Only thing you missed was Rooted Rotisserie, right next to Hollins Market. Indeed, that place is fire. Um, one of the best new restaurants in town. That said, uh, there, leaving no further business before the council, the next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on November 10th at 5:00 P.M. This concludes this special meeting of the Baltimore City Council.